Continued hearing for one forty nine for a site plan review for one forty nine King Street. Ernie Brodsky, I'll give you the floor if you could just first summarize what we wanted from you and. Then tell us how you've responded to that.
Thank you, Chair Callan. Good evening, everyone. My name is Adam Brodsky. I'm a local attorney. And I represent the applicant PSI Atlantic Acquisition Eight LLC. I'm here with Jesse Morgan, a senior vice president with PSI. Dan Ketches, professional engineer with BHB. Matthew Keely is a traffic engineer with BHB. As well as Jan Brian, our architect with Michael Parker Studios. We were last before you on April twenty fourth. And provided additional requested information. I'll just just briefly summarize the high points. Uh, Dan is prepared to take you through the project changes and the team is ready to answer any questions. First, we were asked several zoning questions. Which I addressed in my May seventh letter to the planning board and just briefly. Uh, enclosed wholesale business or storage is a permitted use. In the technology business district under the new table in Article Four. Second, the parking for self-storage. Was determined in accordance with Section three hundred seven point one L of the zoning code. Which was the same provision um that was relied upon for the permitting of the self-storage facility at eighty-one King Street. Uh, eight seven point one L requires sufficient parking as opposed to, for example. Seven point H relating to warehouse. At the time that eighty-one King Street was permitted. Of the then building inspector, the zoning board of appeals, the planning board. And the planning board's engineer agreed that parking for a self-storage facility was governed by seven point one L. And not seven H. Uh, and we have.
Let me just interrupt you unless I have a very old copy of my paper copy. L has to do with apartments in the village.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, H, forgive me.
Yeah, H seems to be.
You're absolutely correct. I I did not read uh, uh, read that correctly in my outline. I apologize.
All right, no, but H seems to be warehouses and. Manufacturing, another storage manufacturing industrial building, and that's one space for five hundred square feet, of course, for. That's what seems to apply. Okay.
No, well, that that does not apply and was determined not to apply for self-storage. And so when the issue was addressed by again, uh, zoning enforcement officer. The ZBA and the planning board um, uh, for the approval of eighty-one King Street, it was seven point one. I and the parking was approved under that section, uh, because this is a low. Parking demand use. It's very unlike warehouse. And uh, Dan and Matt can speak to that. Um, it's simply not having deliveries all the time. Um, uh, there's very little traffic associated with the use. And we provided all of the traffic and parking data to support of the requested number of parking spaces. The last zoning compliance issue um was building height and we provided additional information to confirm that the building height. Compliance with zoning and that information is contained in BHB's response to beer review comments. Also dated May seventh. Um, we had uh, uh, we had calculated using uh. Proposed grades, I believe. I want to be certain of that. Um, uh.
It's 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 not a proposed grade. It's based on pre-construction grade.
Correct. So we we calculated both ways such that uh, such that it conforms uh, using both of those calculations. And and Dan can speak to that more specifically. Uh, the big issue you made.
Do you have that on a site plan to show us?
Yes.
Okay.
Sure. The uh, the uh, big issue was uh, stormwater and so BHB has redesigned of the stormwater BMPs to provide stormwater recharge. Reading stormwater standard three. And again, I'll defer to Dan to explain the project changes to show compliance. Uh, I don't know if Mr. Brennan is attending, but he submitted an updated. Uh, review letter on which he agrees with our design and calculations and his letters dated May nine, twenty twenty-four. Uh, Mr. Brennan did suggest a condition to mow the proposed infiltration basin more regularly. Than we have proposed and we have no problem with that being a condition of approval. Um, three, uh, we addressed your question regarding slope. The driveway slope is designed with a maximum of seven point five percent grade. Which is suitable for a commercial driveway. And there is no a different zoning or there is no zoning requirement for a slope for this particular use. Um, you asked us to look at the curb cut for Avalon, uh, which is approximately a hundred twenty feet away. And there is no conflict with the uh, with Avalon, given the low volume of daily trips associated with uh, the self-storage use. Uh, the board asked about lighting and BHB has provided the cut sheets for the proposed fixtures. And updated the photometric plan showing uh, reduced light levels than what we originally proposed. All of the fixtures are full cutoff type and are dark sky compliant. Uh, with respect to noise, there's a question regarding noise and we provided the specification sheet. For the rooftop condensers. Uh, these are residential type condensers. The rest of the mechanicals. Uh, uh, for HVAC are actually within the building. Uh, these uh, condensers are located behind the parapet. And uh, the decibel levels are between seventy-one and seventy-three DVA, which is. Similar to what you find uh, in an office for noise. Uh, with respect to solar, um, I think Ms. Glassmeyer, I was concerned about that. Uh, the building will be constructed as solar ready. It's simply not feasible to have ground mounted solar, given the slopes and the required landscaping. Um, lastly, uh, an inquiry was made about the possibility of constructing a sidewalk along King Street. Um, as uh, the board will remember, um, that's off of our site and within the Mass Dot layout. Um, it's entirely within Mass Dot's uh, uh jurisdiction and decision-making whether a a sidewalk uh. Uh, could be constructed there. Uh, I'll I'll defer again to to Dan and Matt. Um, we don't think that Mass Dot will uh, will require a sidewalk in this location because of the. Difficulties associated, but if Mass Dot requires a sidewalk, uh, PSI is prepared to install it. And we will be uh, uh, grading the site to accommodate a sidewalk if it in the future, Mass Dot. Um, uh, requires a sidewalk in that location. So uh, those are the high points. Uh, I'm happy to turn this over to Dan to take you to the project. Changes principally dealing with stormwater to address Mr. Brennan's comments. Thank you.
Thanks, Adam. Dan Ketches, civil engineer with BHB. Um, as Adam said, I'll briefly talk through the changes and um. Maybe start with the building height calculation just to clarify um, that for the board. So we we had originally calculated um. Average finish grade uh, based on the pre-construction, the existing conditions. Um, and that was what was presented in the original resubmission. That was an average grade of one hundred and five point two. And that resulted in a zoning height of thirty-eight point four. We calculated it based on the proposed finish grades based on a comment we received from Mr. Brennan. Um, indicating that that that's how we wanted it calculated. Um, so that is about four feet lower. The the average grade is lower, so that results in a higher building height of um. Around forty-two feet. Again, as as Adam mentioned, in either case, that is compliant and then within the forty-five foot height.
Dan, I I, this is Adam. I'm not seeing the the plan up where you're going to share screen and show that.
And. So, so sorry about that. Let's try that again. Apologies.
Thank you.
So this, this was the um, the architectural elevation that was originally submitted. Again. The average grade reflected here was based on the existing pre-construction grade of of one hundred and five point two. And the revised drawings dated May seventh, again, were revised based on that peer review comment we received. So that's um, an average grade based on the proposed finish grades, ten feet outside the building. And again, that's that's about five feet lower. So it results in a higher calculated uh, building height. Again, in either case. Um, it's within the, it's below the forty-five foot maximum allowed in the district.
Uh, e- even using the pre-construction, it's below forty-five feet?
Correct, yeah. It's actually lower, so the pre-construction existing grade is higher. So that results in a lower building height. Um, but as I said, in any other case, it is compliant, whichever way you calculate it.
Find out what found out why post construction grade was suggested, but not with the bylaw definition says. All right, anyway.
Okay, so a- as Adam mentioned, the the majority of the revisions are really really related to stormwater. Um, in these revised site plans.
Have you been to Conville?
We have not been to conservation yet. We were going to be in front of them tomorrow, but I understand they did not have a quorum, so that will, that meeting was postponed to uh, next Thursday. Um, so we did, we have received an updated letter from Mr. Brennan, um, acknowledging the comments and agreeing with the revisions. And as I mentioned, he had one minor comment regarding long-term operation and maintenance, uh, regarding mowing grass. But was otherwise in agreement with the changes.
And Chair Callan, just to remind you, we're in for a stormwater permit only with respect to the Conservation Commission.
Yeah.
So. Yeah, we we believe that with Mr. Brennan's comments approving the stormwater BMPs that. Uh, we resolved our issues with the Conservation Commission.
Do you do you run into any issues with uh, Mass Highway in that this system is right up against the roadway? I mean, what if it overflowed or something? Are you creating a hazard on King Street?
So it it does have a proposed um, outlet towards the Mastiot drainage um, towards the right of way here. Again, I expect that the the stormwater design and grading, the curb cut will all be part of the Mastiot review process for that access permanent. Um, and we'll receive their comments when we get there.
Okay.
But it is, it is a controlled discharge. It won't be, you know, freely flowing over the top of that basin. Um, so the the main change in the stormwater was was really related to infiltration and providing the required recharge volume. And reducing the the peak runoff rates for the town stormwater bylaw. Um, and based on Mr. Brennan's recommendations, we've changed from the surface fire retention basin that did not infiltrate to a surface infiltration basin. And we're, we'll be achieving that by over excavating the bottom of it down to a sand layer about twelve feet down. And that'll allow us to to infiltrate into those nice freely draining soils. Um. And he was, he was in agreement with that approach. In regards to some of the feedback we heard regarding runoff from the rear driveway, we've added a trench drain along that rear driveway, so that will. Capture all the runoff, um, anything that isn't captured in the adjacent uh, trench drain and area drain. And we've also clarified the grading at those area drains and catch basins. If I'm rather, they'll be, they'll be in a depression, so they will capture all the tributary area up uphill. Um. And the the, that was really the main points. Um, there were a handful of other comments from both. Mr. Brennan and the Conservation Commission regarding erosion controls and clarifying um, additional items from the O and M. Manual on the plans, which we've updated in the revised uh, materials, which were submitted to both the board uh, and the Conservation Commission. Now, and then, and got to mention light, lighting, uh, we did. Update the photometric plan. With a couple key changes, notably. Um, this light pole here was pulled about fifteen feet further away from the road. And so you can see there, there's very little light um, beyond the property line and it it only extends to the curb line. Um, and we also reduced the mounting height of those pole fixtures down to eighteen feet again, just to to reduce the. The spread of those light fixtures. As Adam mentioned, they are dark guy compliant, full cutoff, so they won't be chen- um, shining any light upwards.
Anything else? Turn it over to the board if not.
Nope, I think that's all I have. I'm I'm happy to go into detail on any specific items or questions.
Okay. Kevin, I see your hand up, so you'll lead us on.
Hi, um, thanks for running through these changes. I have a few questions. Um, you're on the lighting plan right here. Is that the complete set of lights that are external to the building or are there some in the rear of it or on the sides of it? That may not be shown on the drawing that you have up.
Let me share that again. Uh, th- this is all all the proposed uh, exterior fixtures. So there are two. Poles located in the front. All the other fixtures are building mounted around the perimeter. There are two on the sides and two on the buildings. Again, those are twelve foot mounting heights, so they're not very high. And they don't shed any light beyond the property line. They really just just reach the um, the outer edge of that access road for kind of ma- maintenance and safety.
Kevin, we can't hear you. Kevin, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Um, with regard to the structure itself, is there going to be a feature of the building, like the existing building? Um, that's a neighbor on the same side of the road for a storage unit? That has second and and third story fox um, visuals of the actual storage units um, that are illuminated after hours at night?
Jan, is that something you could respond to?
Uh, I can't if you'll go to, if you'll go to.
Oh, I see some, yeah.
So we've got um. Uh, it came to the left over here. We have kind of two thin windows over that door. That's in the stairwell. So see that, uh, just trying to get some transparency there. The larger windows to the right, we've got kind of a bank of nine windows there. Uh, those you will be able to see. Uh, the windows, I'm sorry, the um, the doors uh, behind there, but in those situations where we have corridors that are visible to the road. Uh, all of the lighting for those are mounted on the exterior wall and shine back toward um, those walls. So we won't have any. Uh, lights hanging um, to where people will be able to to look up and see those. Uh, from the road, but there will be lights mounted. Uh, on the exterior wall aimed back toward um, the the corridor there, just so folks can uh, see as they bypass those corridors.
So, um. Is that a real corridor or is that just a fake wall and people access the units on the other side? I can't say I've ever seen any. Person ever traverse on your existing building or any of these type of um, off-the-shelf plans that show. Like you said, a corridor that has a road with a door facing the road, which I can't imagine the practicality of having a storage unit with. A wall of glass behind the opening for it for people to uh. Realistically lose, use loading things in and out of the storage unit because you'd be breaking glass left and right if you. Had anything that extended to the to the glass. So is that just an appearance only? That's why I called it a a fox um. Uh, motif of a storage unit on the second and third floor. Is that right?
Right. Uh, it, uh, I can show you that. Dan, can we go to either the second or third floor plan?
And and Mr. Hyde, this is Adam Brodsky. I I just want to clarify that we don't own. The other self-storage facility. I think there was some confusion at the last meeting. Um, we may use that company, I believe, as an operator for this facility. This is uh, not. Uh, connected with the other self-storage.
Oh, no, that that, oh, point well taken. Um, but I do see a plan in front of me and it says the same name of the storage unit that I'm sure is an off-the-shelf plan. That's. The same one for the already existing building um, that goes by the same name, extra space storage. So is this the same off-the-shelf? Plan for a building that's going to be two or three stories with the storage units internal to it?
Uh, it is the, speaking of, it is not the same plan. Uh, they are, they're obviously similar in their appearance. Uh.
Okay.
But it's not an off-the-shelf plan.
Okay, so there's been some revisions to it. Um, here's, here's where I'm coming from on this. The lighting to that second and third floor. I'm going to still use the term fox appearance from the roads, from people traversing in front of these buildings. Spills over outside of the building. Even though the illumination of that. Fox interior with the doors and which the appearance of a of a of a walkway. Um, is illuminated from the inside, top-down. There's nothing external to the building. All that light drifts outside of the footprint of the building. And in the case of the building I'm familiar with, and frankly, looking at now and have looked at repeatedly after hours. Um, in dark uh, dark hours. Is what's creating a major issue with regard to light um, trespass outside of the confines of the parcel property. So I guess that's why um, I I I commend you for moving light posts back, moving um. Uh, the heights of them down. Um, I'm not sure if you adjusted the output of the lumens output of some of those, but um. I think there's a point missing here and that's with regard to spillage outside of the building by way of. This um. Um, my, marketing approach. I'm not sure why you designed it that way because it doesn't seem like it's anything other than to. Show people it's a storage building for those that can't read the sign above it.
No, I I fully understand where you're coming from and didn't realize that from our first meeting. I think what we could, you know. Jan was about to walk through as designed. There is an active corridor there. Um, so if that maintained, we would need lighting in case a customer is in there uh, for safety reasons. But what we may be able to do. And I think it would address your concern is. We could make that a faux hallway, uh, similar to the way you're describing eighty-one King. And just not light it uh, after hours, so there'd be no lighting coming through that window. It would still allow the glass and the appearance so that we can. For our own branding, you know, allow a customer to know it's a self-storage facility. But we can adjust that layout and remove that lighting if that, if that's a concern. I did not realize that from our first.
Yeah, yeah, I I think that would go, go the distance with regard to loo- uh, um, with your existing proposed lighting changes. Go the distance to eliminate lighting issues on the new structure and I would. I would um. Support that and I think that's absolutely necessary. And if you, if you do take um, my points um. And observe what's there, you can see the trespass I'm talking about. I mean, I'm even talking about trespass across Route three A. To the conservation land, which is wooded across the street. Um, it's it's that bad and partly because it's at an elevated um, projection point, you know, second and third floor lighting is what we're talking about. That's trespassing. Outside the parcel across Route three A um, from the building that is already constructed, so. Um, I I'm encouraged that you can um, relate to that point. If um, you didn't have any other questions on my concern with regard to that, I just had some questions on the other. Drawing that showed the driveway looping around the building to. I believe it terminates at where the um. Antenna um, array is.
Correct, yeah, the cell tower.
Can you describe what I'm seeing on the left there? It looks like a sizable retaining wall with some gradients that probably started about ten-foot-high retaining wall and then it goes up to maybe a. Fifteen-foot plus or minus retaining wall at the curve. Is that right?
Yep, that's all correct. I think it's a roughly fifteen at at the highest in that back corner. Um.
So with regard to that, um, can you speak to some of the um, how drainage would be controlled on the hillside of that retaining wall? Um. Are there going to be some um, points that are going to need to be periodically flushed out, make sure roots don't grow in them? Um. I'm not sure what the engineering term is regarding them, but basically make sure that. Over time, that retaining wall still allows the water on the uphill up gradient side of it. To traverse out of the wall, perhaps through some drain points, perhaps through some preferential rooting around the wall. So that the 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 um, surface water drainage issues are addressed properly and and stay addressed properly. Through the, you know, multi-years of operation going forward and that. These, these might be things addressed in the stormwater management plan, but I just want to ensure that they are in consideration was made for them. Can, can you speak to that perhaps?
Sure, yeah, the the surface water will be handled with a swale, so there'll be a swale graded along the the high side of that wall. All the way down to this uh, area drain inlet here. So all the surface water will will flow down and be collected. Um, the wall itself uh, hasn't been designed yet, it'll be designed. You know, prior to a building permit application, but typically it'll have a a free draining material behind it with a, an under drain. And that'll handle any um, any groundwater. Within and that, that may be what you're referring to that typically.
You 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 can expect to, you can expect to have to deal with groundwater. Absolutely, yeah. But given the slopes of the the hill. The the fact that the hill serves as a recharge point and. Um, the height of that wall, you're going to have to address that and that'll need to be considered. Um, just another question with regard to the wall. What's? Um, how is the wall designed? What's, what's, what is a protective? Measure device on the top of the wall? Will it extend above the gradient so that it forms a um. A fence or will there be a separate fence at the top of the wall? Um. Uh, you know, um, it it abuts a property with with families, with kids and kids exploring. Um. I'd hate to hear of an issue where someone falls over the top of a ten or fifteen-foot retaining wall.
Yeah, so, yeah, as I said, it it hasn't been designed. It's envisioned as a modular block, a a large block um. Retaining wall. There isn't currently a uh, fence shown as part of it typically. Um. And there's not a code requirement, but it typically you could have a a chain link fence or similar. Um.
I I can speak to that, Dan. Typically what we do behind these retaining walls to. Address the the issue of of fall protection, we do tend to put a forty-two-inch guardrail. Uh, at a minimum across the back of that wall. Uh, depending on the the type of wall, sometimes. Uh depending on the the type of wall, sometimes that's mounted directly to the top of the wall. Most of the time we see that uh back behind the wall uh and not supported by the wall itself. So that's our typical. A condition is to have something that would uh provide fall protection uh at that wall.
So I I would I would like to see that that is something that would be written into any um approval for this um from a. From a a a safety standpoint, and I'm glad that you recognize that. And those can be done nicer than a chain link fence, and I'm sure they could be tied into even how your fencing looks on your um. Uh perimeter of your of your building or similar buildings um. Uh but um those are those are my questions, and I appreciate the the feedback and the attention to the detail on these things.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh just to follow up on uh Kevin's points, the the retaining wall uh issue. Um looks like it uh varies from ten to fifteen feet or or so. Um and uh that's that would be an awful big fall. Um but I think you have a zoning problem with the um. The south side of the on the property line that dips, the the retaining wall dips within the thirty foot setback. And um unfortunately, our our zoning bylaw under five point two is um fairly restrictive. Uh indicating retaining walls within the setback areas can only be three feet high. Um now, that might be a a burden, it might be an opportunity. Um in the in the past, uh when we've seen these big retaining walls. We've um suggested multiple. Uh not so high uh retaining walls, uh which would uh probably eliminate the need for a guardrail on top. If you had four or so um high uh retaining walls that step down the slope. Then um if a kid did decide to. Run around back there and have him forbid slipped or whatever. It wouldn't um. You wouldn't necessarily need the um the, you know, the the barrier at the top. Uh and you could build those closer to the actual property line than. Than what you're showing. So for example, you've got, you're showing the five point two under H. Subsection two. General provisions. Uh I can read it. Number two, a retaining a perimeter wall not in excess of three feet in height may be located within minimum required. Setback distances of a property line. So I I see this as an opportunity to A um make the. Make the retaining wall safer, potentially not have to go with a a. An an engineered retaining wall. Uh and um and use some of the area um. Closer to the property line, so you're not um so pinched inside your site.
Yeah, Adam, maybe you can. Echo this. I I think the way we had interpreted the that um portion of the zone ago that you referenced was that. A retaining wall can be located no closer than fifteen feet or the building setback, whichever is lesser, except. If it's for these conditions, um other than the the three foot height you mentioned. So then we are, we are greater than fifteen feet, but we are within the required side yard setback for the building. That that was how we interpreted it.
Thirty feet, so you're you're in that area.
Correct, we are within the setback, but again. Believe the way the way the way we had read this was that. No wall can be within fifteen feet or the setback distance, whichever is lesser. So in this case, the fifteen feet is lesser. Except for. A retaining wall of three foot or higher length.
And and we did review that with uh the building commissioner, um and and that was his interpretation also.
Well, it's specifically called out as a retaining wall. Um under su- subsection two. See, no. No open storage, equipment, materials, and no other structure except for those listed. In subsection H one immediately below. Shall be located nearer to any side or rear than fifteen feet. So I don't, whichever is lesser. So you've still got a retaining wall that's over three feet in height.
Correct, and but it's not located fif- within fifteen feet of the property line.
Yeah, I don't I don't know about this one. I guess I would have to talk to John about it. And and possibly our our peer consultant. But you're saying that the building commissioner said, uh oh yeah, you can have a retaining wall, a structure. Over three feet in height. Within the thirty foot setback. Is that what he said? Or and or did you get it in writing?
No, Mr. Brewer, we don't have anything in writing. We had a pre-application meeting with the building commissioner.
Okay, well then, I I'm happy to review this point with him directly. Um but then the point I was making of um using. Uh stepping retaining walls of of less than fifteen or so feet high. Uh would increase the safety of the site and potentially give you uh relief if this is. This becomes a more important issue.
Yep, that yeah, fair point. It's certainly something we could consider. I know that we were trying to keep the wall as far off the property line as we could, given the layout. Um just to get those modular walls to have a bit of uh disturbance behind them in order to install them.
Yeah, they got reinforcing ties or some kind of mesh that that goes into the landscape, yep. But with shorter walls, you need less of that. Yeah, so you know, and there's pre-engineered walls and then I I I don't remember what the requirement is. For an engineer stamp in terms of height.
This would require one, it's typically four feet.
Yeah. Um. Okay, so um we can follow up on that issue. I'll follow up with the building inspector and I suggest that you consider um segmenting or stepping. Uh with uh smaller retaining walls. Those 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 big tall retaining walls are. Are no no pleasure, but I know that they're sometimes the only solution. In some cases, but here I think you do have some some uh room for the stepping option. Um regarding the lighting that Kevin was talking about earlier, um the the what what you proposed. By actually having a corridor up against the windows is sort of an improvement over the feature that the other building has. It's a. It's kind of like a sign. Here's some garage doors uh and and it's super super highly lit and. I remember from that decision that those lights were supposed to be turned off. At uh after hours, so if the facility wasn't. Um didn't have uh whenever the signage lighting went off and uh the building wasn't in use. And had no scheduled time that those lights would also go off, but for some reason. They um have remained on, and I think it's probably a a building management issue. And it's terribly upsetting for, I think, anybody who lives in the immediate area, especially in the. You know, at night in the winter when there's no leaves and maybe there's snow, the light just goes everywhere. Um in in your case, where you have an actual corridor, you could turn the lights, I think, you don't. We we don't have a nightlight requirement because of the wasted energy under the new energy code. Um so I I think provided that you turn the internal lights off and um. Uh during off hours, which you should be doing anyway, so you don't waste electricity. And it's not a signage feature. Um I don't, I I don't think it should cause the same problems that um that the other one has caused. And again, I think a couple of years ago I called the. Um and and talked to the managers of the building about it and. They assured me that they would be turning them off at night. But I think it's become a uh systemic problem, but and and I think to Kevin's point, we don't want to have that same problem here. Um I I think it's actually kind of better to have the actual corridor up against the windows, because then it's not. Like a fake feature. It's actually a real quarter and it allows some light for um. The people in the quarter. A lot of times these storage buildings, they're um they're just fake lighting and and no windows. Um but uh since Kevin thought. Uh moving the quarter and and I think it was Jesse suggested that could be done. Has already been discussed. I'll I'll leave it to uh uh you guys to. Either propose to turn the lights off completely after hours or or move the corridor as Kevin thought would be a great idea. Um. The and then the third issue was Adam's final response point on the sidewalk and. He you, Adam, you said something about a. Um requirement from MassDOT to put the sidewalk in. And I thought that since we had a sidewalk that butted into the property line from the reserve uh neighbor. That um. Uh we could uh. Uh benefit some uh some of the people in that area. Um by having a sidewalk continue across your property, across your property front. With the expectation and hope that that would be picked up uh going across Sunrise and then some of the other. Parcels to the um to eventually to the train station. Um either by.
So, Mr. Brewer, I I don't think we have any objection to a sidewalk, but it's entirely within the purview of MassDOT.
I understood, understood. So you'll be going to MassDOT for a curb cut anyway. What I'd suggest is that you propose the sidewalk um across your your property line front. On the MassDOT um uh area, comply with their design standards. And uh see if they're willing to approve it. Now now they have a complete streets system generally, and they like to adhere to that um system. And they might just say, no, if you wanna build a sidewalk, you have to build the sidewalk on both sides and put in a bike lane and a skateboarder lane and. Baby carriage lane and the turtle lane and all the other kinds of things. That seems like that it kills the possibility. Um but but I think in terms of any decision, we would want you to make a good faith effort to uh try and get that approved through MassDOT. I can only speak for myself. I mean, when I say we, I mean, I guess me, I would want you to make a good faith. I don't know what my um my colleagues have to say about it.
I agree.
I agree.
You all said Clark.
Okay, those are those are my main uh points on this one. Uh well, but I wanted to ask, is is our peer reviewer, Mr. Brennan here? To talk about the latest uh memo that he put out in the on the ninth of May? And see, confirm whether there's any sys- remaining issues.
Not here. All right, um at least it's not here, so. Your Theodore, you have any comments?
No, I think Kevin and and um Clark covered most of my issues that I had. The lighting and the sidewalk is, I hope that there is a concerted effort to go, make sure we go to MassDOT. That's it.
My only comment is slightly outside our jurisdiction and it's. These buildings, all due respect, are butty- gley and um. You know, we've talked about this on the planning board, and this is a wake-up call to the board that we need to. Extend the design guidelines for the village in the harbor to three A. You know, we know there's another building on three A that takes a lot of public criticism for its appearance. Um I you know, I can only ask Adam, your group, look at those design guidelines. And see if there's anything that can be done. I mean, these are boxy, ugly buildings, you know, I'm not expecting a colonial-looking mansion here, but you know. Something to make it look a little bit more palatable. Um I don't, I didn't notice on the plan, but is the sign for the building backlit? It's not neon, correct? Hello?
Uh oh, sorry, I'll I'll speak up. We haven't gotten into the sign, the sign permitting yet. It's turn, it's typically. Internally lit, um. Concerns for lighting, we can agree not to light.
No, I believe I believe our requirement in town is that they all be backlit and not. Not internally lit, so um I remember that with the stop and shop years ago, right? And if it slipped through the cracks on the other public storage building, because now I'm sitting here and can't remember what it looks like, because I just whizzed by it. And what it looks like at night, but you know, that's something we'd have to correct. And then the other thing I noted, so that, you know, your retention basin is up in the front. Is there any way, though, to do any type of screening? To the north of that? Yeah, right where your cursor is in sort of that area.
So we do have a fair amount of of.
All right, I I have nothing else, and so I think we we need to verify, you know, and I. This happens a lot. I respect the building commissioner's authority and his his experience, but he is not the final say on a permit, so. Um we want to just confirm with the building inspector. About that retaining wall and give you the opportunity. Uh to look at, look at uh alternatives that uh Mr. Brewer suggested. Um we meet again on the twenty-ninth. I mean, if we're just dealing with that issue. Um. It should be fairly quick, so um. I'd like to continue this to the twenty-ninth at six thirty and then. The first item, get it out of the way. And Clark, you'll be the subcommittee that deals with, that talks to John Hill.
Well, I'll call a building inspector and talk to them about this.
Yeah. All right, is that that acceptable?
I just want to make sure, so the only uh uh with respect to the reconfiguration, the creation of the faux hall. I mean, that's just simply submitting a revised plan as part of the.
I'm sitting here, so I have as conditions, it's subject to time time approval of the stormwater plan, subject to. Uh to department highway miss highways approval of the permit plan. You will request the sidewalk as part of your. Mass highway approval. And that you're creating this faux hallway on the second and third floors. Um that, you know, that would just be a condition, so that we just required, you know.
And 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 Tom, sorry, that 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 faux hallway, if it gets created, is it it the lights are off at night? Am I am I understanding that?
If I understand, Miss Hudson, there there will be no lights because it's a, it's not a real hallway, so there won't be any any lights in it.
Okay, I've seen some of them. Okay, thank you.
And so so that, so those would be the main conditions of it and then, you know, try to stick to your plan with the landscaping and everything else. But really, yes, really, the only issue for us to left open is dealing with this retaining wall. Um I think Mr. Brewer brings up an excellent point that, you know. Under a fair reading of the bylaw, this wouldn't be permitted in its current design, so. Let us talk about that with the building inspector, and in the meantime, you guys think about. Suggestions Mr. Brewer made about redesigning. And we can resolve that at the next meeting.
I I just wanna, I I I just heard something here about this faux hall. The faux hall on the existing building, granted, it's not yours, you're not affiliated with it to some extent. Other than being in the same business, and it's not clear to me whether you're a competitor or you're. Other than meeting in the same business and it's not clear to me whether you're a competitor or you're expanding the same business. The faux hall is the problem on the existing building. If we're talking about a faux hall. On the building in front of us now that you're proposing. I want to be clear and understand how that will or will not be illuminated, and if it is illuminated. How it will not spill outside the building. Attorney Brodsky, I think you just said something. To the effect of. It's going to be lit internally and it's not going to be an issue. That's exactly what the problem is.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going to defer to, I'm going to defer to Jan on this one. I, I, I thought that if it was a faux hall, it would not be lit, but.
No, that's exactly what it is. It's lit on this existing building and anyone that goes by it. Sees, oh, it's a storage unit because they're lighting up the fake wall on the inside and they're showing me it's a storage unit. After dark and that's what spills out because there's a glass floor to ceiling wall there, making everyone be able to see it going by at fifty miles an hour.
Uh, I, I, I can comment to that. It, with uh, with the lighting being such a concern. Uh, obviously, right now it's an active corridor. It would need to be lit if there's somebody there. Um, but if, if we turn that into a faux. Corridor to where all you see are the doors and there's no physical way to get back there, we would not install any lighting. In that portion of the building.
Okay, no problem then, sir, su- super.
All right. So with that, um. I'll, I'll make the motion that we continue this to May twenty nine at six thirty P M.
Second.
And we will.
Wait, I'm so sorry, Tom. Um, sorry. Um, Cassandra has highly suggested that you continue this until the June fifth meeting because she has already posted the May twenty ninth meeting and she is away now. Because that June fifth or June fourth, sorry. Was the. June fifth was the original meeting, May twenty ninth was like the substitute because of the previous meeting being canceled.
All right, it's already posted, so it'll have to be June fifth.
Thank you.
All right, so the motion's amended and continue with the June fifth.
Second.
And presumably you'll have time comes all wrapped up by then too, so. All right, um, all in favor of that motion?
Clark Brewer, I.
Tom Callahan, I.
Kevin Heinai.
Deirdre Hobbs and I.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. Yeah, we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you. Good night.
All right. Okay, um. We have one other thing to deal with, hopefully not too long. I've got to find. Documents, hold on. Okay. Want to share the screen? No, I'm not playing solitaire while I'm sitting here. All right, um. Cassandra has put together that, uh, I guess she and John Helen were talking. And it's time to uh. Think about. Uh, revising our fee schedule. To. Form to modern times, just like everything else is going on. So here it is, here are the proposals. Um, looks like in. Some cases doubling, sometimes a little more, sometimes a little less. Um. So I don't know if anybody's had a chance to look at it, if it's pretty straightforward here. Um. So if anybody has any comments or questions about it, or do we want to look at this further beyond tonight?
Well, my understanding is that this hasn't been updated in a, in a decade or two.
Yeah, it's been a while.
And. Oh, wow. The. These prices, if you will, s- seem high to me. That's, that's just because I'm not a developer and I'm not. Building anything that's, I'm going to sell for a million bucks. Um.
I don't know, I think they look, they look pretty fair. Um, some are going down, as you said, Tom. Um, you know, engineering costs and. Uh, it, so.
I didn't see any going down, but that's.
Are, are we looking at the red? Is the change?
No, the black is the change.
The black is the change, okay, sorry.
Yeah, no, the red, the red is the added.
Red was what it was, black is new, okay.
Well, i- is some towns similar to ours? Are these?
Yeah.
In with them or?
Who, who just said, yeah, that Montana?
These, these fees are in line with what our other towns are charging?
I, I, I don't know that off the top of my head, but.
John and Cassandra found that this is what other towns are charging, also just to keep up date with. The current. Bylaws. Um, they haven't been updated since two thousand and five. So I, I know they seem extreme, but it's because it's. Been almost two decades, yeah, so.
Yeah, I, I mean, a lot of these are connected with, you know, larger projects where, you know, I don't think the cost. Outrageous or a substantial part. I think the one that we're going to find that impacts. People the most is probably this large home review because that can be. A relatively smaller scale project. And that's a considerable increase, but again, you know.
Yeah, could we make that one nine hundred dollars? So it seems a little bit like easier to swallow? I mean, it, I, you know, just ten percent different, but. That, that jumped out at me too.
Yeah, and I also see that, um. You know, our old fee structure had it at a thousand dollars if it's over five thousand square feet, so. It's already at a thousand for the larger houses and remember we've changed the minimum threshold from thirty-five hundred to four thousand. You know, so it's only, it'll only be those houses in the four thousand to five thousand square foot range. That would be. Seeing the significant increase because. The ones that are larger are already seeing a thousand dollars, so. I, I, I mean, I don't care either way, but I, if we're, if most of them are already seeing a thousand dollars, I don't have a super large problem with it, but. That's just the one that's going to impact the smaller projects, uh. More than any of the others here. So. What, what does everybody else think about that?
Yeah, you know, I mean, compared to architects' fees and engineering fees and costs and surveys and, you know. On and on and on, these, you know, it's just a part of doing business.
Yeah, it's like, it looks like pretty much what Peter gets across his desk regularly here. That.
Okay.
In this.
All right, well, then, I mean, if we're okay with it. I, I'd keep the thousand again since it's already there for the large home, but uh. Um. If we're okay with it, um. I'll make a motion that we approve this new fee schedule.
Right, second.
Effective when, I guess, whatever the, effective as soon as it's even possible to make it effective. All right, seconded by Kevin. Uh, any further to spectrum? If it's not, take an alphabetical roll call, all in favor?
Clark Brewer, I.
Tom Callahan, I.
Kevin Heinai.
Deirdre Hobbs and I.
Okay. All right, so that concludes our business. Um, as Montana told us, the May twenty nine meeting is the one that's making up the one that got. Mixed up in its scheduling, the last one. And then we meet again June fifth and. Uh. Town meeting is Monday, June third. And just to update everyone, um. Went to the advisory committee, so right now the seven bylaws have all been approved unanimously by the bylaw committee. Board of Appeals, this board, select board and advisory committee, so hoping they go through. We conducted a forum Monday to go over the, all of them. Um, not incredibly well attended, but I know some other people have.
Hey, I was there.
I know you were there, and, and that was part of the issue is that most of the people there. Were already on a board, knew all about them, but. You know, I guess. You know, um, there was one person there who, even before the meeting, we were. Getting into the details of the MBTA one. Um, I led off with that one. Only because I thought that might, you know, based on some local votes recently, it might. Gender some controversy, but I think everybody. Uh, accepts it. I will say that there's been an inquiry made by a property owner to be included in the district. Um. I thought I had spoken to his counsel about that weeks ago. But he reached out to town council directly and I'm going to speak tomorrow, but. I'm going to take the position that. No, we're not adding anybody to the district at this point and that can be discussed in the future because the. You know, our consultants have done the calculations and the area that we've proposed meets the calculations, it meets the mandate that we got from the select board to do. Minimal compliance. Um, the property in question is in a residential district, not in a commercial district, or we also did not want this to extend into residential districts.
Right.
So, you know, I'm going to have a discussion again with, um, with the, the gentleman's attorney. Um, I'm a little. I thought we put this to bed a few weeks ago and I'm a little surprised they went directly to town council, but I found out about that today. But, you know.
Well, I'm, I'm sure there's, there's, there, there could be dozens of people who are like, when they hear about this, they want their property to be can, included, so. I mean, I, I wouldn't lose any sleep over it.
No, I'm not, I'm not, and, 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 and you know, we're, we're. You know, going to hopefully go with nobody making any kind of amendments on the floor like that and. And that one in particular, it would screw, the engineer, the consultants would have to redo all the calculations. To add the property to the district and. You know, already we have a larger district in Eekridge because we needed a wetlands chunk. To, to uh, connect it all. Properly, and that already increases the possible. You know, number of units that can be built over the bare minimum, so we don't want to. Encourage that number to go higher in any respect and we're not going to be able to do. The uh, engineering calculations on the fly and we don't want to risk. Of course, this being turned down by the state. Because we won't find out until that, until after fall town meeting and. The end of the year is the deadline, so then we'd be in a position where we're in non-compliance, so. I'll deal with that, but that's just came up today, um. So, um. You know, but again, some people have gotten in touch with me, saw the forum on tape and say, you know, all, all nice things and, and. To this day, whether through a private message to me or on one four three, I have not heard anything. In opposition to the MBTA district, so. You know, hopefully we'll go through. You know, the same week that Marshfield turned it down, about six or seven other towns passed it, so, you know, right now the tally I think is four towns have opposed it and. Well, well, well over a hundred or over a hundred and fifty have approved it, so, um. So it should, should look good. We're going to be articles sixteen through twenty-two, so probably later in the night, well, depends. Depends how much debate and controversy there is in front of us and stuff, you know, we'll, we'll see, so. That's that update and anybody else have anything to update or discuss?
No, because Tom, I did already respond. I will not be at the meeting on the twenty ninth. I apologize. I have a previous engagement, so.
Okay, well, no.
Sorry about that.
No need to apologize because it was, you know, it was. Uh, rescheduling of something that no, not on this plan, so. All right, with that, I'll.
Kevin, is Kevin over at the storage building right now?
Yeah, he's, he's shooting us pictures.
Yeah, this is live and it illuminated itself about half past the hour. And to answer Tom's question, the sign is backlit. But um, you can see how the illuminated, um.
They're like fake doors.
All night long.
The board lighting, yep.
And they were supposed to be on a timer and turn off after hours with the lights, with the signage lights.
Clark, when you speak to John, um, bring this up and if it was a condition of the permit that this shouldn't be lit at night.
Yeah, it was, it was, and.
Him that we need some.
Because I've been by that at one A M. and they're all, it's lit up, so.
Yeah, like a, like a, not like a scary Christmas tree.
Yeah. Yeah.
We don't get into discussions of why any of us are out at one A M. Nothing good.
No, don't, don't, don't go there.
All right, all right, uh.
Wasn't a school night. Definitely wasn't a school night.
Okay. Montana, thank you for filling in tonight.
Motion to adjourn?
Of course.
All right, um, I'll second the motion to adjourn, all in favor?
Clark Brewer, I.
Tom Callahan, I.
Kevin Heinai.
Deirdre Hobbs and I.
And Kevin, thank you for the live shot. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thanks, everyone.
Good night. Good night, everyone.
Good night, Montana, thank you.